This is a special meeting of the City Council being held for the purpose of organizing city government for the year 2023. At this time, I would ask our senior member, Council Robert K. McCarthy, to assume the chair.
Before I get started, I just want to recognize some of our past local officials that I get tonight, some of Lovely, former Councilor Colley and Mike, District Attorney Tucker is here with us tonight, former Councilor Steve Dipple, former Councilor Lisa Peterson, former Councilor Christine Bedouin, former Councilor Matt Vino, former Councilor Bill Go. Who else did I miss? Oh, Tom Fury's hiding behind Lisa Peterson, former Councilor Tom Fury, as well as all the department heads and everyone. Oof, that is a bit... Oh, of course, my good friend Counselor Toriel is hiding over there as well. I just want to thank you all for being here tonight. And as we get going, your presence is very well appreciated here this evening. Oh, look, I got the gavel.
Mr. President, have I been before Councilor Happy now?
I did. I recognize.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. God, sometimes I do need to be corrected. Ask my wife. She'll tell you. With that, I now call upon Councilors Hapworth and Prozynuski to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Thank you. This is an organizational meeting of the City Council. I now recognize Councilor Varela.
Thank you, President McCarthy. The City of Salem and City Council, January 4th, 2023, ordered that the City Council proceed to organize for 2023 by an election of a president, and I move for adoption by roll call vote.
Councilor Varela moves for adoption by roll call vote. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
This is alphabetically. Councilor Cohen?
Yes.
Councilor Dominguez?
Yes.
Councilor Hapworth?
Yes.
Councilor McCarthy?
Yes.
Councilor McLean?
Yes.
Councilor Merkel?
Yes.
Councilor Marsillo?
Yes.
Councilor Prozynuski?
Yes.
Councilor Stott?
Yes.
Councilor Varela?
Yes.
And Councilor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
Thank you. On the matter of electing a president, we have 11 members voting, 11 in the affirmative, none in the negative, the matter carries. I now like to recognize Councilor Marsillo.
Thank you, President McCarthy. It gives me great pleasure to rise tonight to nominate Councilor Megan Stott to be our next City Council President. Over the past year, Councilor Stott has done an excellent job, not only as the Chair of OLA, but also has been involved in modernizing our processes. Councilor Stott, the City Clerk and I researched and reviewed new agenda software, which she will be helping to roll out to the Council this year. Councilor Stott took the lead on getting the City Council documents onto a shared drive, enabling all councilors to access orders and documents at any time. As we continue to create more efficient council processes while providing even more transparency in our work, Councilor Stott is the right person to lead us. I think I say this every year, but as a mother of two now adult children, it amazes me to work with Councilor Moms with young children. The job of City Councilor is a part-time gig and full-time work, and is in addition to the real jobs that we hold. That alone is a full plate, but to be a mom with small children, and in Councilor Stott's case, a single mom, is... simply underscores the old adage, "If you need something done, ask a busy person." Councilor Stott is a perfect example of why this adage is true. Moms need to be organized and prepared for anything. They need to listen to the words being said, but also decipher what the underlying problem really is. They need to be patient, remain calm, negotiate, and remain hopeful about the future. These same qualities make for incredible leaders as well. But being a mom and being a City Councilor are not the only things to define who Councilor Megan Stott is. I know her to be empathetic and caring, someone who is always learning and is unafraid of change, someone who will fight for those who can't be at the table. She's unapologetic about her desire to make swift change when it matters the most, and she does what she says she will do. We couldn't ask for a better president of the City Council, and I look forward to working with her. I ask my colleagues to join me in voting for Councilor Meg Stott to be our next Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Cohen?
I second the nomination.
Councilor Cohen seconds the nomination. Any further discussion? Seeing none. I now recognize Councilor McLean.
Thank you, Chair. I move that the nominations be closed.
Councilor McLean moves that the nominations be closed. Alls in favor? Alls opposed? I further now call for a roll call vote by name. Madam City Clerk, please call a roll for the City Council President for the year 2023.
Councilor Cohen?
Yes.
Stott.
Name.
Oh. Councilor Stott, yes.
Councilor Dominguez?
Present.
Councilor Hapworth?
Councilor Megan Stott.
Councilor McCarthy?
Councilor Megan Stott.
Councilor McLean?
Councilor Megan Stott.
Councilor Merkel?
Councilor Megan Stott.
Councilor Marsillo?
Councilor Megan Stott.
Councilor Prozynuski?
Councilor Megan Stott.
Councilor Stott, present. Councilor Varela?
Councilor Megan Stott.
And Councilor Watsonfelt?
Councilor Megan Stott.
Thank you. On the matter of the election of a president for the year 2023, I have 11 members present, nine for Councilor Megan Stott, and two voting present. I declare Megan Stott Council President for the year 2023. Historically, two councilors escort the newly elected president to the podium. For the past two years, we had to carry out this tradition virtually. So tonight, since we are back in the council chambers where we belong, I have the pleasure of appointing Councilor Merkel and Councilor Watsonfelt to escort the newly elected president, Councilor Stott, to the podium.
Uh-oh, we're in trouble now. Thank you. Thank you to my fellow councilors. I would like to begin by acknowledging and honoring where we are meeting. This land is Namkeg, where generations of indigenous peoples lived and passed through for centuries. I acknowledge that this is indigenous land and also acknowledge the Massachusetts Tribe, who continue to honor and hold this land into the present. But isn't it nice to be back here in chambers? After two years of virtual meetings, this body had a virtual inauguration. The first body to have a virtual inauguration, and now the first body to have a hybrid reorganizational meeting. As our Madam City Clerk would say, this could be an entire chapter in the book of firsts. Thank you to Madam City Clerk, Eileen Symonds, and our Assistant City Clerks, Maureen and Rochelle, for making us look good today, and really every day. This meeting in itself is a full chapter. And also thank you to SATV and all of those behind the scenes and IT for making this happen. Thank you for those of us that joined us this evening, both in person and now virtually. And Councilor McCarthy took away a little bit of my thunder by thanking the former elected officials and elected officials that are in this room this evening, but I'd like to acknowledge, fresh off his own inauguration, our new Essex County District Attorney, former State Rep, and Ward 6 resident, Paul Tucker. Congratulations. And of course, thank you, Senator Lovely, for joining us this evening, as well as Chief Lucas Miller from our Police Department, as well as all of the former elected officials that Councilor McCarthy mentioned earlier. Thank you to our Council Dean, or as I like to say, the Council OG. With age comes wisdom, and thank you for sharing yours with us. Thank you to outgoing President Marsillo. Your tough act to follow. Thank you for always pushing us to do our best, which is resulting in great achievements for us. And of course, thank you for the next 10 minutes at least, to our mayor. I'll be honest, I struggled with how to thoughtfully thank you in 50 words or less. I was told to keep this short. For the four years of service and commitment to our wonderful city, your leadership has transformed Salem into what it is today, a vibrant, diverse, welcoming city that we are all proud to call home. This is a direct result of your vision, determination, and ability to bring people together. Thank you for your countless hours, your fearless leadership. You have inspired a generation, and we can't wait to see what happens next. And now, thank you to my fellow councilors. Thank you for productive 2022 and for trusting me to lead you into 2023. Our differences are what make us unique and got us in these seats, but as the past year has shown, our ability to work through those differences and find consensus, or close to it, is what makes us stronger. I am grateful that we can have those difficult conversations with respect towards one another. I promise to stay the course and to continue our momentum and to support each of you. I plan to continue our advancements in accessibility and transparency, including to help implement the new agenda software which was just mentioned, and sharing documents more uniformly. Change is not easy. It's confusing and often messy, but oh, do I love it. And I don't believe that our role is to maintain the status quo and minimize change. I love that we are questioning the status quo, changing those barriers that were written before us. But as we know, in Salem specifically, a delicate balance is needed. I am confident that we can embrace our storied history and celebrate it while moving forward together to ensure that Salem is the inclusive, welcoming, and vibrant home we are all working towards. As the past few years have demonstrated, we as a city have become masters at pivoting, piloting, pioneering, and this year, and I'm sure we will continue to be filled with some more pivoting, probably. This body, we, we as a council, we will be the constant next year. It's going to be a transitional year, but in this past year, we have led with empathy, compassion, and resiliency, and I know, I am confident that we will continue to do so in the new year. And finally, I'd like to say one more thank you. Thank you to our families. Our work takes time, time away from home, time away from the dinner table, from events, and thank you all for sharing your time with your families and with us. A special thank you to my mini-partner in crime, my daughter Stella, who perhaps has attended more committee meetings than any other 11-year-old I know. I know it's not always easy, and your evenings are often filled with wandering around empty city buildings searching for a better Wi-Fi signal, but thank you for being by my side. I truly believe our junior councilors are perhaps the most important members of this body. They are the ones I'm always working so tirelessly for. So, ready to get the work started. Onwards to the new year. Thank you.
We now have the second meeting of an order to amend the rules and orders of the City Council.
I now recognize Councilor Marsillo.
Thank you, President Stott. I move for adoption of the amendments by roll call vote.
Madam City Clerk, will you please call for the roll for adoptions of amendments of the City Council... Oh, I'm sorry, under discussion.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, President Stott. So, it wouldn't be this council without a last-minute amendment. You all got a copy of this in email and on your desks. It's just to better and further clarify Section 13, Voting When Conflict of Interest Is Present. And the new wording is as follows. No member shall vote on any question or serve on any committee where their private interest is immediately concerned, distinct from that of the public. If the recusal by reason of conflict of interest of one or more members results in the absence of a quorum, such member or members may vote in order to achieve a quorum, provided they are able to make a written disclosure, use an exemption, or invoke the rule of necessity when legally required to act. Members should refer to Mass. General Law 268A. Every member not having such interest present, when a question is put, shall vote unless the council for special reason excuse them. And that's the new amendment.
Thank you, Councilor Marsillo. Any further discussion?
No.
Councilor McCarthy moves to approve. Second, I bid Councilor Varela. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll for the adoption of amendments of 2022 and further amended this evening of the City Council Rules and Orders?
With the adoption, correct?
Correct. Adoption of amendments of 2022 and further amended this evening.
Councilor Cohen?
Yes.
Councilor Dominguez?
Yes.
Councilor Hapworth?
Yes.
Councilor McCarthy?
Yes.
Councilor McLean?
Yes.
Councilor Merkel?
Yes.
Councilor Marsillo?
Yes.
Councilor Prozynuski?
Yes.
Councilor Varela?
Yes.
Councilor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Councilor Stott?
Yes.
11 members present, all members voting in the affirmative. The matter carries. I now recognize Councilor Watsonfelt.
Thank you, President Stott. City of Salem and City Council, January 4th, 2023, ordered that the amended rules and regulations of the City Council be adopted as the rules and regulations for the year 2023, and that the same be suspended for this meeting, and I move for adoption.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. I now recognize Councilor Dominguez?
Thank you, President Stott. City of Salem, City Council, January 4th, 2023, order that the Honorable Mayor be invited to address the members of the Council at this session.
All those in favor? All those opposed? It is so voted. Mayor Dursko? It gives me great pleasure at this time to introduce you to the honorable, for the last time, to introduce you... I'm gonna milk it a little more. The Honorable Kimberly Dursko, Mayor of Salem, who will address the Council.
Thank you so much, Council President Stott. It's wonderful to see you in this position, and I'm so thrilled to be joined by so many colleagues, friends, individuals that I've worked with throughout many, many years in this role, and so grateful to our new District Attorney, former Police Chief, former State Rep, Paul Tucker, Salem native son. Really grateful to have you in that role. Won't be working with you in the State House in the same capacity, but I'm so grateful for, not only for the work that you've done in the past, but for the job you're going to do representing all of us in Essex County so well. It's a role fit for you. Thank you for being here. To Senator Lovely, a colleague, a friend, someone who we spent a lot of time in this chamber together. It's so terrific to be in a position to be neighbors. We'll be working right next door to each other, seeing the swearing-in ceremony today, and knowing all of the plans ahead in the future that the Senate President laid out. I know you're going to be playing a big role in that, and we're so fortunate to have you representing Salem in the State House. Grateful to have you here. And to the many city employees who are here, could you please stand if you work for the City of Salem or are on a board or commission in the City of Salem? I think it's... I'm so proud of the work we've done together, and I often, often tell the fact that I would take our senior staff, our city employees, and put them up against any top-notch team in even a larger city. The work we do, the dedication, the innovation, the get-stuff-done approach to governing, begins and ends with all of you. And a special shout-out to my mayoral staff in the Mayor's Department, Jen Westle, who's been there since day one when that door opened, 17 years and counting, as well as the staff we've had in an office where you don't have to look outside to tell when it's a full moon, right? It's never boring, it's always on, and you are always on. So, thank you to the mayor's staff who've been such a... just a stalwart. Whatever was handed to us, we handled it together, and I'm really grateful. Thank you. You know, my heart is full of pride and appreciation as I stand before you tonight to deliver my final State of the City address. After 17 years of growth and prosperity together, we've transformed our nearly 400-year-old city into a vibrant, thriving community, the hub of the North Shore, and in so many respects, the envy of many Massachusetts communities. Together, we have built a city that is poised for even stronger growth and a more successful future. We professionalized local government, we rebuilt city finances, prioritized transparency, encouraged more voices, and engaged more residents across Salem to participate in their government. All of this is the direct result of intentional actions we have all taken together. City employees, City Council and School Committee members, those present here and those who served previously, local leaders, business owners, institutional partners, neighborhood groups, and the countless talented volunteers serving on our boards and commissions, and the amazing residents who are part of this remarkable community. Tomorrow at noon, I'll be sworn in as Lieutenant Governor of Massachusetts and with Governor Maura Healey, continue to work hard every single day for those I'm fortunate enough to represent now in all 351 cities and towns. Governor-elect Healey and I will bring the kind of government we prioritized here in Salem, and the kind of results we've had here to our Commonwealth. It's truly a bittersweet moment for me. Writing that resignation letter may have been the hardest letter I have ever written in that office. And while I'm thrilled about the new challenges and opportunities ahead, I'm leaving a job I love, and frankly, one that I've loved every single day. I'm honored to serve all of you. Because of the work that we've done together these past 17 years, I'm bringing with me a clear vision for a stronger Commonwealth, one based on values that both Governor-elect Healey and I share, that our communities matter, that local government matters. I've been fortunate to have some terrific jobs. Worked in Beverly, I've worked in Chelsea, but by far, this is the best job I've ever had, working alongside some of the most dedicated and professional people with whom I've had the privilege of collaborating. These chambers are steeped in history and pride, and the work we do here, it impacts just about everything in our community. Our schools, our neighborhoods, the lives and livelihoods of the tens of thousands of people who put their trust in our service. One of the things I value most about city government is that it has that direct and immediate impact on people. It's an enormous responsibility, and one that I've always taken very seriously. Everything that we do and how we do it, it matters. Over these last 17 years, I've been fortunate to be surrounded by colleagues and community members who share in that call to service. We recognize that for Salem to thrive, we need diverse talent and diverse people who share our passion for local government and for our love of this community. Our work is guided by evidence, sound policy, and best practices, and we've strived to never let politics interfere with what is best for Salem. I know you, this team of leaders, who have championed Salem alongside me for all these years. You've done the work, and you own our city's successes as much as I do. There are so many examples I could share of how Salem has been able to punch above our weight class. We were running through the laundry list of things going back to 2006. Councilor Vino will remember when we didn't have a lot of money in the bank, and we were struggling to do anything. The opportunities to reframe and rebrand a community that fought about the type of tourist we want to have, and whether or not we were going to be a visitor destination. There's just so much of it. But the one example, I guess I would say, about how we punch out of our weight class, I think has to do with our waterfront. Salem's waterfront, long key to our prominence and growth, been marked by a coal-fired power plant for generations. Public access and connections to our harbor for commuting, for recreation, for much of anything, really wasn't that existent. Today, Salem is poised to become a hub for offshore wind operations, using our historic port to bring good union jobs to our local economy, and not to mention a clean energy future to Massachusetts. Thank you, Jeff. That is worthy of an applause. That is not just going to benefit Salem, that is not just going to benefit the Commonwealth. Believe me, that is going to benefit our planet in a meaningful way, right here in Salem. And our waterfront, combined with our hip, historic, happening downtown, is on the map today for visitors and residents alike to enjoy. Just this week, I don't know if anyone was walking around this past week. Wasn't October? It's not the wonderful time of New England summer or spring. It was a winter holiday break, and our streets were teeming with people who were filling hotels and shopping and eating and enjoying our history and supporting our local economy. Together, we have changed Salem for the better. But our legacy isn't just about the waterfront or inside a more professional city hall or in our teeming downtown. It's also in a more resilient and sustainable community, a place striving to be more welcoming and equitable to all. It's along complete streets, enabling safer travel for all, in our signature parks, and inside a long-awaited new community life center that we collectively finally got done. It's in a thriving small business community, and in a place where we supported each other as neighbors through a historic pandemic. It's in how we aspire and act to ensure homes for every resident and great schools for every child. Our legacy is our enduring commitment to a city that's always willing to innovate and to lead. The vision and the progress here in Salem did not come from one single source. So many people brought together their shared experiences and expertise, and that's the collaborative model that will shape how Governor-elect Healey and I will carry forward our service to the Commonwealth. Teamwork isn't a slogan. It's a way of doing business, and it's what people expect from their public officials. Now, those of you know me and have worked with me know that I can be pretty direct, and I know that every day of the last 17 years hasn't been simple, and that every success hasn't been, at times, like hard-earned. Success doesn't happen overnight, and we all recognize that there are going to be shorefalls along the way. It's going to be more incremental than we might like it to be. Our shared success also meant that we had to be willing to take risks and strive for real change. We failed up plenty of times, and we certainly often demonstrated that old adage, that doing the right thing usually means doing the hard thing. But in my mind, the real win is that despite any setbacks and challenges, we always maintained our shared vision for a better community for everyone. When we're in this chamber, we're all Team Salem. You know, I didn't have the good fortune to be born here or raised here. The voters of Salem took a chance on me, an out-of-towner 17 years ago. They bucked the normal trend and set a new tone, welcoming me with open arms in 2005, as we looked to the future together, from our city's first woman mayor... from our city's first woman mayor to today, being part of Massachusetts' first all-women executive team, we're still looking to that future together. It truly, you know, has been all, all of it, every minute of it, an honor. And to the people of Salem, I want to say thank you for your confidence and your faith in me. Thank you for giving me my forever hometown. You know, I was a Navy brat, we moved every three to five years. There wasn't that one spot that you recalled fondly as the place, your place, how you identified. I got that here in this community, like so many others. That's unique, that's special. And as I begin this next journey, I know I'll do so with people in this room and people of this great city having my back. I promise that I'll always have yours and that I'll continue to serve you the way I always have. I'm so deeply grateful for the opportunity I've had over these last 17 years to help shape, improve, and lead my hometown, this amazing community of Salem. My goal's always been, like, let's leave this place better than we found it. And I'm so grateful for the support, the collaboration, the friendship of so many of you in making that opportunity happen. When I announced my first candidacy for mayor in 2005, I said that Salem deserved a city government as dedicated, optimistic, and forward-looking as the people it serves. I believe that we've achieved that vision and that the state of our city is as strong as its future. I'm incredibly thankful for all of you who have joined me, and there are many, in making that possible. I'm looking forward to all that comes next for Salem and for our Commonwealth. And I want to thank you sincerely for what you have done to move both our community and our state forward. Thank you and God bless.
Councilor Mercillo?
Point of personal privilege.
So granted.
This is a resolution from the City Council for the mayor. Whereas in 1986, one Kimberly Lord transferred to Salem State University via Florida. She not only majored in political science, but was an outstanding player on the women's basketball team. Whereas, the beginning of her journey and passion in politics began when right here in Salem, where she was an intern at the city's planning department, where she continues to work with some of the same people and has made lasting friendships with them and others that worked for the city during that time. Whereas, Kimberly Lord made Salem her home after graduation and went on to marry her college sweetheart, Nicholas Driscoll, in 1992. Together, they have raised three remarkable children, Delaney, Ailish, and Nicholas III. Whereas, Kim's career in municipal government has taken her from Beverly's Community Development Director and, after earning her degree from the Massachusetts School of Law, Chelsea's Chief Legal Counsel and then Deputy City Manager. Whereas, in 1999, Kim's name appeared for the first time, but not the last, on a Salem ballot and was elected as the Ward Five Counselor. She remained in that seat for four years. Whereas, in 2005, Kimberly Driscoll decided to run for mayor and broke the glass ceiling when elected as the first woman mayor of the City of Salem. Whereas, Kimberly Driscoll has held this position for the last 17 years, whereby her leadership and dedication immensely improved the city's rainy day fund, bond rating, and transparency into city government. Her focus on the creation of a welcoming city, not only for residents, but also for business owners and tourists, has resulted in a vibrant city that people want to live in, work in, play in, and visit. Whereas, in the face of the COVID-19 pandemic, Mayor Driscoll acted swiftly and decisively to ensure the safety and health of residents and municipal employees while working to keep businesses afloat, resulting in a close-to-net-zero change in vacant retail space. Her strong leadership decisions often resulted in the state following suit soon after. Whereas, in 2022-- I had to put that in there. Whereas, in 2022, Kimberly Driscoll decided to run for Lieutenant Governor. Kim's same passion, dedication, determination, and intelligence, which she exhibits for the City of Salem, won her the role as the state's next Lieutenant Governor. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Salem City Council owes a debt of gratitude to Mayor Driscoll. And as we look back over her last three decades of work, we say, "Not bad for a Navy brat and daughter of an immigrant mother from Trinidad." And be it further resolved that this resolution be made a matter of record of these proceedings and that the Salem City Council, on behalf of the residents of the City of Salem, wish Mayor Driscoll much success in her newest role and cannot wait to see what she does for the state of Massachusetts. And I ask for adoption by roll-call vote.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for adoption of the resolution for Mayor Kimberly Driscoll. Councilor Cohen?
Yes.
Councilor Dominguez?
Yes.
Councilor Hapworth?
Yes.
Councilor McCarthy?
Yes.
Councilor McLean?
Yes.
Councilor Merkel?
Yes.
Councilor Mercillo?
Yes.
Councilor Prozuniewski?
Yes.
Councilor Varela?
Yes.
Councilor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Councilor Stott?
Yes.
Eleven members voting, eleven in the affirmative, the matter carries.
I just want to say I'm finally grateful to have my own--
I now recognize Councilor McCarthy.
Thank you, President Stott. Order that the 2023 special election calendar to fill the vacancy of the mayor of the city for the remainder of the term, submitted by the city clerk, be adopted by roll-call vote. And I just want to let everyone know that the governor did sign it and it is back. So what we were waiting for in a home rule petition did come through so that the calendar that appears is the calendar that we will be following to fill the vacancy of mayor for special election. And the city clerk has asked me to also inform anybody who would like to pull papers that the papers for that vacancy will be available tomorrow in the elections office on the first floor.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll for the adoption of the 2023 special election calendar? Councilor Cohen?
Yes.
Councilor Dominguez?
Yes.
Councilor Hapworth?
Yes.
Councilor McCarthy?
Yes.
Councilor McLean?
Yes.
Councilor Merkel?
Yes.
Councilor Mercillo?
Yes.
Councilor Prozuniewski?
Yes.
Councilor Varela?
Yes.
Councilor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Councilor Stott?
Yes.
On the adoption of the 2023 special election calendar, eleven members voting, eleven in the affirmative, the matter carries. I now recognize Councilor Dominguez.
Thank you, President Stott. The City of Salem, City Council, January 4, 2023, order that the City Council proceed to elect one of its members as acting mayor until candidate for mayor is elected by the registered voters of Salem. And the election results are certified by the city clerk. And I move for adoption by roll-call vote.
Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll? Councilor Cohen?
Yes.
Councilor Dominguez?
Yes.
Councilor Hapworth?
Yes.
Councilor McCarthy?
Yes.
Councilor McLean?
Yes.
Councilor Merkel?
Yes.
Councilor Mercillo?
Yes.
Councilor Prozuniewski?
Yes.
Councilor Varela?
Yes.
Councilor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Councilor Stott?
Yes.
On the motion to proceed to elect an acting mayor, eleven members present, all members voting, all in the affirmative, the matter carries. I now recognize Councilor Mercillo.
Thank you, President Stott. So here we are. When Mayor Driscoll announced her campaign for Lieutenant Governor in January, we knew this day would likely come. And for the past many months, everyone has been an expert on our ordinances and charter. It felt like everywhere I turned, someone was telling me how all of this would work and who would automatically become the acting mayor and how soon a new mayor would be elected. I think if you were to describe the members of this city council, the word "contemplative" would be at the top of the list. This isn't a council that rushes in or makes decisions without deep consideration of the issues. It's not a council that is simply passing the time in order to run for a higher office. So the issue of who would or should step into the mayor's office began some very deep thinking on everyone's part. Being a city councillor is not the same as being a full-time mayor running a city. This council is made up of business owners, professionals with full-time jobs, mothers and fathers of young children. And becoming the acting mayor is a full-time commitment of many months. There's a common bit of advice that most politicians carry in the back of their mind: learn to count. Usually, this refers to counting votes, knowing where you stand on important issues. In this case, it's counting the months, understanding the municipal calendar, and understanding how the election cycle works. And it was clear that the length of time needed to complete a fair, special election for mayor would mean that whoever took on the role of acting mayor, aside from ensuring the smooth running of the city, would be responsible for at least 90% of the work in the creation of our next municipal budget. This is not insignificant. The job is more than acting, something that all presidents of the council become at some point in their term when the mayor leaves the state. In that case, you're on call and hope beyond hope that the call never comes because that usually means something catastrophic has happened. This role comes with the specific powers to, quote, "exercise all the rights and powers of mayor and shall be sworn to the faithful discharge of the mayor's duties." The person we elect tonight will be the mayor until the special election results are certified sometime in May. There's only one person on this council who fits the bill. Councilor McCarthy is the OG on the council, someone who's been here long enough to have an incredible amount of historical perspective on many issues. He's been deeply involved in the port and the offshore wind facility, the sewage treatment plant, the planning and development along the harbor, issues in neighborhoods from the Willows to the downtown, to the Point, and beyond. He's built strong relationships with every department in the city because of his tenure on the council. He's someone that people trust when they need help. He's someone who cares about his constituents and his colleagues. And he's someone who reminds us to take the time to check in with our families, to spend the time when we can with those we love because the job of city councillor never stops. We get pulled in many different directions, have a regular calendar of nighttime meetings, and our families often come second. Councilor McCarthy loves his job. Not only his day job as contractor in a business he built with his brother, but his other job as ward councillor. He knows and loves the rules of the council and the history imbued in those rules, but also knows when it's time to make some changes to modernize the way we operate. He's been through 15 budget cycles and has been president of the council three times. His 15 years on the council have covered issues all over the city, from zoning changes for development to funding for our parks to major road projects and the building of a new power plant. Over the past year, I've gotten to know Councilor McCarthy much more. In fact, I recently told him that I get more calls from him than from my husband. But that's because Lindsay works from home and we share an office. What strikes me about him is his deeply caring side. He's not afraid to show his emotions or to reach out to check on his colleagues and constituents. He also takes to heart the idea of leaving the fight on the floor of this room. No vote is worth ending friendships, whether they're professional or personal friendships. Councilor McCarthy is a humble person. He acknowledges what he doesn't know and is willing to learn. We still have some work to do with his knowledge of technology, but I'm confident he will master that, too. And so I rise tonight to nominate, with no reservations, Councilor Robert K. McCarthy to be our acting mayor. Our city could not be in more capable hands. I ask my colleagues to join me in giving our unanimous support to Councilor McCarthy.
Councilor Prozuniewski?
I have the great pleasure of seconding that nomination. Thank you.
Are there any further nominations? Seeing none, I recognize Councilor Cohen.
I move that the nominations be closed.
All those in favor of closing the nominations? All those opposed? So vote it. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll? The roll will be taken by stating the name. Councilor Cohen?
Councilor Robert McCarthy.
Councilor Dominguez?
Councilor McCarthy?
Yes.
Councilor Hapworth?
Councilor Robert McCarthy.
Councilor McCarthy?
Present.
Councilor McLean?
Councilor Robert McCarthy.
Councilor Merkel?
Councilor Robert McCarthy.
Councilor Mercillo?
Councilor Robert McCarthy.
Councilor Prozuniewski?
Councilor Robert McCarthy.
Councilor Varela?
Councilor Robert McCarthy.
Councilor Watsonfelt?
Councilor Robert McCarthy.
And Councilor Stott? Councilor Robert K. McCarthy. Thank you. On the motion to elect, Councilor Robert K. McCarthy is acting mayor. Eleven members voting, ten in the affirmative, one in the present. Matter carries. I ask for fellow councillors that we move to make the vote to be reflected as unanimous. All those in favor? Matter is unanimous. The city clerk, Eileen Simons, will now administer the oath of office to the acting mayor.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I--
I, Robert K. McCarthy--
solemnly swear--
solemnly swear--
that I will faithfully and impartially--
that I will faithfully and impartially--
discharge and perform--
discharge and perform--
all the duties incumbent upon me--
all the duties incumbent upon me--
as acting mayor--
as acting mayor--
acting to the best of my ability and understanding--
acting to the best of my ability and understanding--
agreeably with the Constitution and laws--
agreeably with the Constitution and laws--
of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts--
of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts--
and the charter and ordinances--
and the charter and ordinances--
of the City of Salem--
of the City of Salem--
so help me God--
so help me God--
I-- I
I, Robert K. McCarthy
Dusonely swear
Dusonely swear
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution
Of the United States
Of the United States
So help me God
So help me God
Congratulations.
Thank you, President Stott. City of Salem, City Council, January 4, 2022, order that the acting mayor be invited to address the members of the City Council at this session.
All those in favor? All those opposed? So moved. Mr. Mayor?
I just want everyone to know that the city clerk told me I had to keep it brief. This will probably be as brief as a speech as I'll ever say, but thank you. Yeah, thanks for that. Yeah, they all know it, and I hate to say it. Where are they? I am gonna well up a bunch of times because it's my nature. To my colleagues on the council, thank you for bestowing on me the honor of serving as the acting mayor of the City of Salem. I am humbled by your support and belief that I can fill this role for the city until a special election is certified. To my Ward 1 constituents, thank you for all allowing me to represent you on the council for all of the last 15 years. While I will not be in these chambers, I will be just across the hall, working with my colleagues to make sure that your issues are addressed in my absence. To all my past colleagues who helped shape me and make me the councillor that I am today, thank you. There are so many councillors that I've had the honor of serving with, but at this time I'd just like to take a brief moment to recognize a few. Counselor Joe O'Keefe. He took me under his wing and taught me the ropes, and I affectionately called him dad. I think about him every time I come into this room. To my friend Matt Vino, I had the pleasure of sitting next to him when I was a rookie. The president does, the president is the ability to seat people in the chairs, and sometimes you don't realize what an impact it can have on somebody, the simple act of sitting someone next to someone. Counselor Vino, just by sitting next to him and watching him and listening to him was the most, was the most helpful thing that could have ever happened to me when I first started out. And he instilled in me the value of the power of knowing the rules because we are governed by rules, and knowing the rules and how to use those rules and interpret those rules makes this body work better on behalf of the citizens of Salem, and I thank him for teaching me that. To Counselor Josh Torial. Josh and I almost instantly became friends on the day I met him, which was the election night. When you, when you're a ward councillor, you run your own race and you try to stay out of everyone else's race, and you see all the signs going up and you're like, who is this Torial guy? And that night of the election, actually it was Counselor Vino called me, and we were talking, and he says, do you want to meet the next ward councillor of Ward 5? I says, who? And he told me, Counselor Torial, and we met that night, it was probably the first night we actually had a conversation, and we became fast friends to this day. For 10 years on the council with him, he was my sounding board. He still is to this day. I utilize him when I have a question or I have a thought, and he's always there to listen and give his advice, and I really want to thank him for that. The Senator Lovely. She was my mentor when I first started. It was easy to, she made it look easy, and along with her and countless others when I was a rookie, she mentored me and made me understand what it was to be a councillor, and she's become a very dear friend. She was and is always willing to listen and to take a call and to offer advice if I asked or just listen as I tried to work through an issue. The district is lucky to have her, and I was lucky to serve with her when I first started. Recently, she called me, and we were talking about what would be happening tonight. She congratulated me and told me how excited she was for me. I told her that I was overwhelmed with the outpouring of support that the department heads, the employees, the community leaders were coming up to me and offering me, because in case you didn't know, it's the worst kept secret in the city, who was gonna be the next acting mayor. Her response to me was simple. They recognized, they recognized the work that you've done on their behalf, they respect you for it, and know you will continue to do the work on their behalf in this new role. And it resounded with me when she said it to me. That's what brings us here tonight, the work, the work that we need to do on behalf of our residents. Tonight is not about me, it's about all of us. The City Council each year is charged with the organizational, to organize itself to serve our residents, and we have, and we have an effective and professional body doing so. Congratulations to President Stott. I look forward to your leadership in the upcoming year. Congratulations to all the committee chairs. All of us who've served know that the hard work that gets done, gets done in committee. The extra layer to tonight's meeting is the departure of our mayor, Kim Driscoll. I could go on for days. I mean, Kim has been with us for 17 years, and I've been here with her for 15 of those years. And we in the council, we like to affectionately call it Kim time.
Oh, you find out.
Oh, yeah. But what people don't realize, what some people don't realize is the fact that Kim and I were blessed that our children went to school together. We went on field trips together because on top of being elected leaders, we're mom and a dad, so we would go to field trips, and not just the ones to like Pops Field Theater. We went to like Washington DC and New York City and Philadelphia, and I'm gonna tell you right now, never, ever play charades with her at midnight in the lobby of a hotel. Because she's ruthless. For, for, for all those who are gonna be serving with Kim in her new role, my only piece of advice to her, any of them would be, do not answer an email at 1:00 in the morning. Because Kim has the innate, has enormous ability to write emails when she gets a thought in her head at any hour of the night. When I, anyone in this room who knows that, raise your hand, because we all, we've all been there, but the mistake you make is when you answer the email. Because then she realizes you're up. Then you get a text message or maybe a phone call. But I joke, and seriously, Kim, you've been, you've been, you've been, I could, I literally could, when I say that, I don't mean a joke, and I could stand up here all night and tell little anecdotes and stories, and we could run through your accomplishments, and we would be here all night, and because there's so many, but over the last 15 years, I've been blessed with your leadership and also been blessed to be able to call you a friend, and I really do appreciate that. I stand here tonight to tell the citizens of Salem that city government will continue to work for you during this unique period, and I will make informed decisions on behalf of all of us. I am not Kim Driscoll, nor do I pretend to be Kim Driscoll. I am not perfect. Just ask my family, they're all sitting over there. But I can't tell you what my father taught me years ago, is that when you make a mistake, you fix it immediately. My job and my life experiences have taught me to be a problem solver and a consensus builder, and I plan to use those skills in this new role as needed. To all the department heads and employees of this great city, my objective is not to not upset the apple cart, it's to keep the train on the tracks. And Salem does not work without all of you. To Eileen, Maureen, and Rochelle, my Bat team, thank you, thank you, thank you for making me and all of us look good each and every day and every meeting that you do for us. I want to say thank you. To the, I guess, can I call my staff now? To my staff, to my friend Jen, who literally has been blowing up my calendar for the last two weeks, scheduling appointments for me. She told me a couple weeks ago, she says, counsel, don't worry, you've got this. And I appreciate her for saying that, but when she said, it's, we're gonna keep the Titanic afloat. And I had to say to her, I said, Jen, I really appreciate that, I appreciate that, but we need to come up with a new analogy because you can't rewrite the end of that movie. At the end, it sinks. But in all, in all seriousness, I want to, I want to thank Jen and the staff, I want to thank Dominic. Dominic has agreed to stay on for a week or so during the transition between, you know, me coming in and everyone, you know, with Kim and Dominic leaving. And I want to just take a brief second to recognize, for those of you who don't know him, my incoming chief of staff is sitting right over here, Christopher Zicaranza. He's gonna be, he's gonna work with Dominic over the next week or so to make sure that, you know, we do meet the needs of the City of Salem. And lastly, I want to thank the family members of all the elected officials here tonight in the chambers or at home. Public service is an honor, but we all serve, all of us that serve know that we cannot do it without the support of our families. As Counselor President Stott just said, always remember, the work we do on behalf of our residents is important, but the time we spend with our families always comes first. And finally, to my family. To my brothers, who showed up from Beverly. Across the bridge, they, there was a toll, but we let them through. Thank you. To my, my brother Stephen and I have been in business for, I don't know, I can't even tell you, since the 90s. And when I told him about this, he was like, seriously? But as was, as, and I can't thank Counselor Riccardi enough for her kind words, but what was said in there is true because, Mercilow, I'm sorry, did I say that? Oh, man, I'm sorry. I guess I dropped, I apologize. But the conversation I had to have with my brother is, I'm like, I had to put my whole, I gotta put my life on hold for at least five months, and that doesn't come easily. And he understood, and then he took the checkbook away from me. But I want to thank him for that. I want to thank my mother who didn't make it here tonight, but she's, she's always been supportive of me, and she, you know, she raised four boys, and I think she did a pretty good job. To my boys. It was 15 years ago, when I was in one of those chairs for the first time. And I remember, because right where Dustin's sitting right over there, John Keenan was the state rep at the time, and Jack was sitting on his lap because the chamber was packed and we had the choir in here singing, and it was a big event and everything, and there was no place to sit, and so John said, you know, sit on my lap, you see your father, he's sitting right over there. And he did. I wish John was here tonight because I'd have, I'd have Jack go sit on his lap right I've been blessed. My, my boys gave me the time to do this job. They're both products of the Salem Public School System. They both graduated from Salem High School. They both went on to graduate from the University of Massachusetts in Amherst. My son William, my oldest, the overachiever, is now in a double master's program for administration and policy and something else, don't even ask me, at Suffolk University, and I, when I say, when, when former councillor Sargent used to say, I'm not even the smartest person in my family, yeah, that's what goes, what I'm saying to my family is that one day, if he's willing and the voters recognize his ability, he'll be here, or here, or wherever, because he is committed to public service. My son Jack never wants to go to school again, but he is also one of the kindest, most thoughtful people that I've ever met, and I know that whatever he decides to do in his life, he'll succeed at it because he gets it from his mother. And finally, to my wife. I can't do it without you. You know it, because you remind me of it all the time. She's very fond, anyone who knows my wife, she's very fond of telling people that if I hadn't married her, I'd probably be dead in a ditch someplace. She's also been in constant contact with Jen to make sure that Jen understands that, you know, I'm hers now, so she's already packed a bag, got me ready. But no, seriousness, I'm really humbled by this tonight. I'm not gonna lie to you, I find that, I find it daunting, the fact that tomorrow morning, I'm gonna walk into City Hall as mayor, and I'm gonna sit in an office that Kim Driscoll sat in for 17 years and did the most amazing job that I've ever seen any elected official ever do, and I am further humbled by the fact that you, my colleagues, are gonna allow me to fill a void until the voters of the City of Salem pick the next mayor, whoever he or she may be. But all that being said, once again, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. I know you didn't come to see me, I know you came to see the mayor, and I know I've spoken way too long, but seriously, congratulations, Kim, and good luck tomorrow. And I, Counselor Mercilow stole my line, I say it all the time, there's 50 states in the country, there's 50, 50 lieutenant governors, and one of them is ours. So, thank you.
Thank you, President Stott. I move for Jen.
All those in favor? All those opposed? We are adjourned.